Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'd like to call to order the October 11th meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks again for joining. It's fun to have a big audience, and we'll get to you all after we take care of some business. So thanks for joining us, and for all of you who are joining us at home via Zoom. Thanks again. Mary, if you would please do the roll call.
Louis Palmer.
Here.
Simon.
Here.
Granlin.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Tonight, we would like to begin with a Highlander highlight. Tonight, the board will be honoring Kennedy Dudley for being awarded the National African American Recognition Award because of her outstanding academic performance on several college board tests. You want to come on up? I think, yep. Superintendent Stenvik needs your picture clearly based on this, so if you wouldn't mind. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Thank you, Principal Nguyen.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and our Board of Education. I am here to introduce an honor, Ms. Kennedy Dudley, for being recognized as a, for a recent honor that she's received. Kennedy has received the National African American Recognition Program Honor through the College Board, which recognizes students for excellence and performance on their scores within the National Merit PSAT, the PSAT 10, and AP exam scores. And so Kennedy carries a non-weighted 3.75 at heights and has taken some pretty tough classes, including AP classes of world history and AP statistics. Kennedy has also taken PSEO classes of physical therapy, occupational therapy, gender studies, bio-renewable resources class, and she also participates or has represented our high school in volleyball, gymnastics, track, football manager, social justice club. She's been a super fan or is a super fan in the new teacher induction program. She's always been a speaker here the last two years, and also multiple leadership conferences and workshops, too many to actually name, is what we discovered. Kennedy has many responsibilities at home. She's an excellent sister. She takes care of some of her siblings and cousins, and she also holds down a part-time job. Kennedy has not yet declared where she will attend college, yet she is currently looking at preparing for a career in either sports medicine and/or youth development or a combo of those. So I'm still trying to talk her into being a teacher and hiring her as soon as she gets out of college. It is truly an honor to recognize Kennedy tonight, and she is a great role model for our entire district, and I am proud to know her. Look at that, Kennedy. I didn't even get choked up.
He did it. He did it. Well, Kennedy, I think the board probably has questions or comments for you, but before we do, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Should I, like, slide this over?
Yes, please. Then the people at home can hear you.
Wait. How?
That's great. You're great. It's great right there. You can lean back. It'll pick you up.
I don't think I have anything off the top of my head to say, though, but I'm definitely open to questions.
All right. Great. Board, any comments or questions? Lorian.
Kennedy, I don't know if you remember, but I've known you since you were in elementary school.
Absolutely.
Very spirited, very spunky young lady, and I'm so glad to see that you have channeled your energy and had made such a, this is positive.
No, it's great.
Very positive outcomes for you, for our school community, for our greater community, and for what lies ahead of you. You're going places, and I'm very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, my gosh.
Other questions, comments?
I would just love it if you'd become a teacher. Seriously, I mean, you know, this is, this is, this is a great, this is a great place to be, and it's really great when family comes back home.
Yeah.
Okay. So please, please consider that.
Look at, look. That's a lot of peer pressure from, from member Palmer.
Please consider.
No, I have been thinking about it. I enjoy working with kids a lot, so we'll see if I find my way back to Columbia Heights at some point. I don't, I don't think that would be a bad idea.
That's all I can ask. Thanks. You've got a lot on your plate already.
Yeah.
So I was in a Zoom meeting with Molly before this, and she was very sad that she's not feeling well enough to be here and was choked up when talking about how proud of you she is. I just wanted me to make sure that I can.
I really appreciate it. I love her so much. She is very close to my heart. I grew up with a fair amount of her students that go here, so I would say that I know her pretty well, and it is kind of sad she's not here, but I do appreciate it.
Well, her mom heart for you is there. And I have not gotten to know you, but just hearing you don't waste a moment of daylight, girl. It's prompt every minute of life.
Thank you.
And that's, that's amazing. And I'm sure that there are times that it feels tiring to do all the things that you do, but it all matters, and, and you're not wasting any of it. So we're just, we're all really proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being such an inspiration, for everything that you do and all of the hard work. It's definitely noticed, and I can't wait to see all the amazing things you're going to do in this world. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I agree. Just really thankful that you're here. It's exciting to imagine you, at the end of this year, walking through the hallways of your elementary school, meeting other stu-, meeting young students who have this opportunity to look up to somebody who's found somewhat academic success and somebody they can look up to. So I'm very excited for that. And even if you don't become a teacher, which I think, you know, of course, remember Columbia Heights. Come back and share your life with us.
Of course.
And let us know what's going on, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm definitely proud to be an alumni, so I will be back for sure.
Yes. All right. Well, we'll officially make you alumni hopefully in June? June? For now, let's be a student. Yeah. All right. We have a certificate for you. If you wouldn't mind coming up here and taking a photo with me, is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Lorian, do you want to give this one out?
Oh, no, you go.
Okay, all right.
But thank you.
We take a picture right here from our value sign, and that's okay. And if you want to, we can line up the only days. We'll take a picture of this. We'll show you the vibe. You want to do something else, you can come with this. Just something I don't know. She doesn't have that.
Right. We take this, and then they're going to want to shake your hand. So if you walk through there, and then these, these people would like to get your hands to be taken, too. This is good practice for all the tenured teachers. This is what you will also. All right, one more round of applause. Great. Thank you so much for joining us. Kennedy, we do not expect you to stay for the whole meeting unless you're super excited about school boarding, in which case, please, stay and watch.
I think we're going to head out.
All right. That's fine. All right. So we will move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. So we'll move on, and I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Oh, Lorian?
Yep.
Lorian. Mary says Lorian. Any discussion on the agenda? All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Agenda is approved. One second while I get this in here. All right. We'll move on to the announcements. October 18th on Tuesday, it's a school board work session here in the community room. Reminder, October 20th and 21st, there is no school. October 24th, Tuesday, is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And again, August 30, sorry, yeah, August 31st, which is a Friday, there's also no school. There, is that right?
October.
What did I say?
August.
Yeah. Yeah, that's unfortunate. October. There's normally not school on August 31st either, though, just for the record. November 8th is the, November 8th is the general election, which moves our school board normal Tuesday night meeting to November 9th, which is a Wednesday at 7:00 PM here in the school, in the community room. November 15th, Tuesday at 5:30, there's a special call board meeting here in the community room, and then at 5:40 the same night, there will be a school board work session here in the community room. We will move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right. We'll move on to communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I see a whole bunch of staff. Do I have any blue cards? All right. Hearing none, we'll keep moving on. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report from October 11th, the school board minutes from September 13th, September 20th, and September 27th, and the curriculum cycle for 2023 to 2033. This is crazy, 2033. That's going to happen at some point. A motion to move forward the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
Lorian? Discussion on the consent agenda. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Motion carries. All right. We'll move on to discussion reports, and we'll first start with reports from members of the board. The board members will be asked to report on activities, board activities, since their last regularly scheduled meeting. So we'll start with member Palmer.
I get to start every week.
Oh, you're, you're our veteran. You're all put together and stuff.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. I was just trying to remember what I had forgotten.
Maybe I looked this way more.
So, yep. Well, I mean, I've, I've been to a lot of places and talked to a lot of people in the past couple of weeks here, but I did attend the candidate forum here that, that local 710 hosted, so that was really nice. I, it was really cool to see that it was live streamed, too, so more people could participate. I also attended the monthly 916 board meeting, so just some great information on some of the programs that we're, we're doing and an update on the SRP protocol, which I believe will, I'll be attending the training session seminar that they're going to be having with all the local districts and administration. That's going to be in the end of November, I believe. I also had a chance to go visit Crestview and talk with the residents there, which was really great. And then I attended also another event over the legends that was mostly revolved around housing issues and costs. So just being aware of what's going on in the community and, and people that are living on fixed incomes, and it was very eye-opening, so. And then I finished off the week with attending the Pride Festival, first one I'd ever been to. It was a great event, beautiful day, and I got to have lots of great conversations. That's it.
All right. Brenna?
I went to the Color Run at North Park, which was fantastic. Just kids covered in colorful dust all about. That was great. I attended the candidate forum as well, and we had a listening session on Zoom right before this meeting that I was on, and I've had lots of conversations with community members, member Palmer, member Granlin, member Louis, and superintendent Stenvik.
All right. Thanks. Mary?
All right. So I had phone calls with Director Palmer and Director Simon, and also phone calls with Superintendent Stenvik. I also attended and observed the candidate forum, went to the city council meeting and the Pride Festival, which was also super amazing, really wonderful, perfect day for it, and lots of discussions with students and families. And prior to this, I was at the Subcommittee for Policy meeting for an hour and a half. It was a good, it was a good long one.
Yeah. I got to put that in here. All right.
I think that's it.
Lorian?
Great. Thank you. I had the opportunity also to attend the Pride Festival that the city put on, and I thought that was great. Spent some time talking to our high school GSA advisor and the students there, and so that was really fun to have some conversations with them. I had conversations with member Palmer and attended some girls swim meets, so they're still finishing up over there right now, but great season that they're having, and it's been some really fun meets over there.
It's a long meet. Yes. All right. Thank you, as far as my report, thanks for filling in. As chair last week, I was, or last time we met, I was ill, and so I have a, like, mine goes back a little bit further. In terms of my role with the liaison to the city council, I was able to attend the city council meeting earlier this month, the first, the second week, second Monday of the month? Is that when I went? Doesn't matter. I was able to share some of the things that were going on in our district, as I talked about the last time I was here. I was able to also go to the Pride Festival and see students there and participating in things, displaying art and different things there, which was really fun to see. I was able to go to part of the AMSD meeting. I unfortunately missed it, but Superintendent Stenvik put information about it in our board packet, and I picked up the back half, and so I was super bummed. So I'm going to go back and review some of those things. I think they're making a lot of that content available because it was so popular. Was able to go to our policy meeting, our work session, there was probably a couple of chair meetings, and there were at least one, one chair meeting. I was able to go to the volleyball game in the new gym last Friday night, some girls' tennis, conversations with Superintendent Stenvik and some community members. All right. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report for us?
Yes. I've just got a few highlights. We had our first day-to-day of the year last week, and teachers and school administrators reviewed initial assessment data, and from that data, we're able to individualize growth goals for students and plan for academic acceleration strategies. Also, last week, the Tri-Metro Governing Board met. We discussed safety at our sporting events, being proactive, not only with physical safety, but also safety in terms of racial harm. I met with the American Indian Parent Committee, and the parents and students weighed in on our academic plan for the school year, and they will come and present to the board, I believe, in November. We recognized Indigenous People Day this week as well. And as you know, in 2018, North Park School for Innovation was named as a national green ribbon school, and as a part of that, today, a group of architects and Congresswoman Ilhan Omar were interested in sustainable design and programming, and so they were given a tour at North Park by the fifth grade students that are part of the green team. So that was exciting, and we got to tag along for the, for the tour, and, and I had conversations with each of the board members since our last meeting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, I think. All right. We will move on to the, the big moment based on our, our audience here tonight. We're going to recognize our newly tenured teachers. So teachers, welcome. We'll just, I'm going to give you a preliminary round of applause. Lindsay, it's like we're clapping for you. Come on up. Director Bennett, Director Bennett is our real presenter, but I couldn't, I had to, no, it's you. No, it's you, for sure. Now, you can pull your chairs up if you, if you'd rather sit, or you can sit.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. It's exciting to be back in person with the tenure reception. We had to take a two-year hiatus, but we're back. We have, this year, we have 18 staff members that achieved tenure as of July 1st. Some of them, their first year of teaching was the pandemic year, so it's quite an accomplishment to make it for virtual teaching, in-person teaching, back to virtual teaching. So before we recognize each of the staff members, we'll have the principals say a few words about their newly tenured staff.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board. This is a special group to me. I hired most of them when I started. So we're kind of coming up together and seeing Valley View grow and change, and not all of them, but Zoe Schaus, Zoe Brosen is one of the teachers who's getting tenure this year. Zoe, I don't know if you remember a little card. So Zoe and I were together in St. Paul, and she was having a tough day, you know, and so I just wrote her a little note saying, "You're going to be an excellent teacher. Take time," you know, "and, and just relish the moment." Well, she, when I reft St. Paul, she wrote me the note back. She saved it. I've saved it as well, and she said, "I will never forget your kindness and, and how you believe in me." And I'm very thankful that I was able to cross paths with her again and have her to come, come to Columbia Heights. An amazing teacher. The kindness is spread every day to our children and to our students, so we're, we are very grateful and honored to have her at Valley View and be part of our Columbia Heights family. The next person is Johnny Chow. I know someone's not too happy with me because they were at someone's daughter's school prior to coming to Valley View.
We stole fair and square.
We stole fair and square. But I knew we had a gem on our hands. In the first year, we had our first concert, and Johnny had a majority of the parents singing along with his concert. It was amazing, and he has not disappointed and has grown, and as he said earlier this evening, you know, "I was dipping my toes in, and now I'm just going in with both feet," and he has. He's just excelled, and I'm so proud to have him at Valley View. Katie Johansson is another teacher that I came on board with, an amazing advocate for our students and our families. She teaches pre-K, and we know our pre-K students are a lively bunch who need a lot of guidance, a lot of care, and a lot of reminders. As those students exit Katie's class, they're much more independent and able to function in our bigger school and, and walk up the hallways. It's, it's rather lovely, and I'm just so proud of her because, like I said, she is an advocate for her children. She, she works tirelessly for them, and she will fight for them and their needs, so I couldn't be more thankful. The next person who's not here tonight, Tiffany Zhang, and I'm going to lump these two together because it's Tiffany Zhang, Logan Spears, are two of our fifth grade teachers. They didn't start out that way. They started out in first grade and quiet and demure, and I asked Logan, because we had an opening in fifth grade, and she came from a, a, a upper grade, you know, hesitantly taught first grade, but she goes, "I would love to go to fifth grade." And if you know Logan, she's, like I said, just quiet and tiny, but she commands a presence, and Tiffany does the same thing. And so they've really been our backbone for our fifth grade, because I'm a firm believer fifth graders are still children. They're not grown. They're not middle schoolers. They need structure, they need routine, they need the mothering, and those two do that. And we have shined in fifth grade and what they're producing, and hopefully graduating some great students over to Duane at CA, but just wonderful teachers, the both of them, and they're a partnership that really has benefited Valley View. So, Michelle?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board. It is my pleasure to first talk about a first-grade teacher at Highland, Billy Servio. Started off as a student teacher at Highland, and then we lured her into a long-term substitute position that school year in kindergarten. And then, of course, I hired her because I hired her from a very strong elementary school where I've taken many teachers from. Fair and square.
Fair and square.
But what I have to say about Billy is Billy's not only a community member, she lives in Columbia Heights, her children have gone through Columbia Heights, but she's a dedicated mom and teacher and has, she's kind and compassionate to her students. So students who are in Billy's class are very fortunate to have her. Next, I'd like to talk about Matthew Keesley. Matthew is a, our music and elementary band teacher at Highland. Matthew is what you would consider a rock star. So if you look at his shirt today, he didn't change out of his daily attire. Woo-hoo! But normally, it's a flower Hawaiian shirt or something lively, and when he comes in the cafeteria during the day, you would think Elvis Presley walked in because the kilt's go crazy. But it is above and beyond his rock star status with our children. I consider Matthew a very valuable member of our staff. He is a lead on our specialist team. He's also a member of the Highland Leadership Team. He's helped and gave lots of suggestions as far as scheduling, ideas for different ways that we can make the building run even better than it is. So I appreciate Matthew's expertise and willingness to go above and beyond. Last is Emily Diddle. She was not able to be here tonight. She has two small children at home, but if you know anything about Emily, is she reached tenure, received a master's degree, and had two children while teaching at Highland. So she is a busy woman. She is our Level 3 ASD primary teacher, so she works with kindergarten through second graders. She has a huge heart. You have to, to do that job. She's extremely organized, very patient, comes to work with a very positive attitude, and really goes the extra mile. Today, we had our, a staff meeting, and we asked for teachers to share academic celebrations or achievements that occurred in the last month, and she talked about just a small thing that her kids were able to do. Every single one of them was able to do a worksheet at the same time, which may seem like a small feat, but when you have children who are still drinking out of bottles and not potty-trained, having them engage academically is a huge feat. So I appreciate all three of my tenured teachers very much.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik. A little bit of a private joke there, I guess. Not so private. I made it, so, good. I, it was kind of a theme here. I had heard about Ms. Stephanie Vang in our, we have meetings where we go over evaluations. We get to hear other principals rave about people. I had heard Ms. DeWitt rave about this Ms. Vang that she has teaching EL for years, and then, lo and behold, one day, she was dropped into Columbia Academy, and now I get to rave about her. So I see why. Stephanie has brought just a tremendous amount of positive energy to our building. Her caring for kids is just a wonder to watch, and she brings all that she learned in her elementary experience to our school to really nurture those students who need that extra care. So really thankful to have Stephanie Vang as one of our EL teachers at Columbia Academy. In addition, we have a lot of new teachers, I call them new, I guess, in our science department there. We had three new teachers come in, and we thought, we got one more spot, we got to find that fourth person to, because we got this dream team going. And lo and behold, who came through the door but Ms. Jett Johnson? And we knew we had a complete team. She came in, fit like a glove with, as a collaborator, as a partner to that team. She brings a real love for our students, is so genuine, all kids, whether they're easy to have or hard to have. Ms. Johnson loves them, and it's great to have her in our school. John Gustafson was somebody that I first learned of when reading some things that he had written and posted. I said, "Wow, that guy is, can really write, and he's got a lot of interesting things to say. Wouldn't it be cool if we could have him come teach at Columbia Academy?" And lo and behold, he, I didn't know, know this, but he saw, he lived in Minneapolis and that he taught in a school, a charter school in Minneapolis. So I wrote him back, and I said, "Why don't you think about coming to Columbia Academy?" And he has been such a great addition. Social Studies teacher first, now an English teacher for sixth grade. John isn't feeling well today, so he's not here tonight, but he has been a wonderful addition to our English department, to our school. He also is a Heights resident, lives down the street, so he gets to come to school on his scooter each day when it's not snowing. And finally, Alicia Geske came to us as a student teacher from Augsburg, and Mr. Bowman, who's been there a long time, came up and said, "We can't let this person go." So we hired her before she was even done with her studies, and she has been doing such an amazing job for us. She's had her second child now since she's been there with us, and so she is home with her two little ones tonight, but. home with her two little ones tonight. But, uh, we're very appreciative for all the great work that Alicia does as well.
I see what's going on, having me go last. I see, I see this.
Um, from the high school, um, good evening once again, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stendbick and our school board. Uh, I have Julio Batross, a second year teacher at Heights. He's a longtime educator. Um, he stepped into a Spanish class. He was a late hire last year for, uh, Mr. Giroux, who was serving our country. And so Julio, uh, did a really nice job, but we found it even a better spot for him as he is a second language learner himself. Uh, he is teaching our heritage Spanish class and it's been a great fit for him. Um, he can definitely, uh, understand some of the lives of our kids and there's been some great connections made for, uh, Julio and his students. Uh, he also coaches soccer and track for our high school as well. Uh, we also have Lee Johannes. Lee is a part of our social studies team. Lee teaches American, or he teaches world history and co-teaches American history. The thing I would tell you about Mr. Johannes is our special ed teachers rave about him because of his flexibility with all students, his understanding of students with disabilities and just his ability to, um, really just be flexible and take any kid anytime, anywhere. And so we're really happy to have Lee Johannes. Emily Shields, uh, Emily Shields in our science department. Emily comes, um, pretty quiet and, and calm in nature and I had a chance to watch her shine, uh, this first part of our school year as she led staff development. Uh, she is brilliant. She is super, super intelligent. Uh, she's very active on our science department. She's all about, um, results and she pushes, pushes us to keep moving, keep moving, keep moving. She likes to see the results. Um, and she does just great work with our kids. And then in attendance tonight, honored to have Ms. Priscilla Martinez Carlos here. And as she has an additional last name and want to congratulate her for that publicly, um, as she has recently been married. So that was exciting to add, uh, her husband to our team as well, right? So you're all Heights, uh, Highlander family. Priscilla's part of the EL team. Um, she's done an amazing job, uh, in supporting not only her students, but also our staff. Uh, our EL team, um, we, we decided the conversation today was our entire building is the EL team now as the faces in, in, of our kids have shifted of who's in front of us in the classroom. But these are EL teams and especially Priscilla are the, uh, just a great resource for our teachers, um, and problem solvers, advocates of kids. Um, just you want to see someone run a show, run a room, Priscilla, you, I walk in, I don't know where she's at. And then all of a sudden she, I hear her and she's strong and she's mighty and her, she loves her kids. She's passionate about teaching EL and, um, yeah, we're just really, really lucky to have her. So, um, and she also does after school, uh, works in our homework club, uh, which is just a blessing for us as she does speak Spanish and we have kids that can access homework club in, in this, in their native language as well. So, um, yeah, just lucky to have all these teachers. I tell our teachers they could teach anywhere. I'm not certain anyone could teach at Heights. And so just really thankful for these, uh, four teachers as they receive tenure tonight. Well, tenure at the very beginning of the school year, but we're honoring them tonight.
Can I get to speak for, um, two staff members? Um, the first one is, um, Sandy Sharif, who works in early childhood special ed. And Director Godfrey wrote, um, congratulations to Sandy Sharif. Sandy is an early childhood teacher in our pre-K four programs in non-public schools. We are so lucky to have Sandy supporting our Columbia Heights public school students after becoming a teacher in her second career. And she wants to thank her for all she does for our students and families. And on behalf of Principal Sasek for Mr. Dorji, um, he said, he came to us as a special education teacher after many years as an educational assistant at Valley View. He has proven to have the capacity to learn the complicated world of special education due process, curriculum and instruction in a very short time. While his professional practice is excellence and continues to improve, it is what he brings to North Park School for Innovation as a human being that is most impressive. Everything he does is subtle, so subtle that many adults may not even notice. The people who do notice however are our students. He's a magnet for children who need a little something extra. Sometimes it's motivation. Sometimes it's a good laugh and it always is giving his love and care. We are better school because of Mr. Dorji. So those in attendance, I will read their name and have them come up and get their certificates from the school board.
All right.
First one we have from Columbia Academy is Jett Johnson, science teacher.
All right, give me a sec.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
You can clap.
Next up is Stephanie Vang, Columbia Academy EL teacher.
It's gonna get easier, one less every time.
I guess I'd am backwards for you.
Oh yeah, I organized them and I said, who was talking?
Congratulations.
Next we have Sandy Sharif, early childhood special education. Next we have from the high school, Priscilla Martinez Carlos.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Next from Highland, we have Billy Servio.
This guy plays W's lately too, I learned.
Yeah.
Highlight of my academic year so far. Thank you for that moment.
Thank you.
Yes.
You show that skill off.
From North Park, we have Namdal Dorji. From Valley View, we have Johnny Chow.
Music teachers tonight.
All right.
Congratulations.
One's going to Lizzo, one's not, so.
Oh.
Next up from Valley View, we have Katie Johansson. And also from Valley View, we have Zoe Broschost.
We need a hyphenated.
I ordered a new certificate.
Want to make sure it's. Congratulations.
Yeah.
That's it, everyone. Another round of applause.
Thanks again for all the principals who came to join us tonight to celebrate. Uh, I don't know if they already swept away the, the treats. Oh, uh, Director Stunkel would love to get a teacher, a teacher, a picture of you all outside. It also makes for an easy exit here, uh, so you don't have to awkwardly pretend you want to be here. Um, some people really love the board meetings, others, not so much.
If you wanted to stay.
If you want to stay, come back in. We will regale you with board functions. All right. Moving on, tough act to follow. We'll move on with Executive Director Niemwey, Director and Director Bennett to talk to us about Strategic Direction A.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stendbick. Tonight we're here to go over Strategic Direction A. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values, and again aligning them with the, um, Columbia Heights Public School Board Education Equity Statement. Um, it's an informational update. There's no governance question. Um, tonight we're here to talk about Strategic Direction A, which is improving each student's experience and school climate. So to start, um, the first metric is A 1.1 and that's the percentage of licensed staff participating in health or wellness professional development. And again, we're at vision, um, as we've been the last few years, as one of the professional development days has had a focus on, um, wellness opportunities such as yoga, financial health, benefits, um, holistic wellness. Um, so we continue that again last year.
The second measure is A 1.2, student consistent attendance. As you can see, um, we have no available information this time. It's similar to last year. And this is in part because of how the calculations are made. And so during the COVID year, there were so many, um, ways that attendance was taken. And so the way the Department of Education do their calculation, uh, based on what was happening during the COVID year, they're unable to give us the accurate attendance. And so that's why we don't have enough information.
The next item is all staff absences. And last year for school year 2021, we had a big drop because we were virtual and people, if you were sick, you could work from home and still teach from home if you're able to do so. So this year we did, um, not have any change, um, from our illnesses or, um, personal illness, staff numbers from the school year before. Um, the next one is staff wellness benefit outreach initiatives. Um, being a vision here, um, last school year, we did go to a new health insurance company. Um, so there was a lot of outreach and, um, information given out to staff about the new benefits. We also, um, had communication out about COVID, um, and also just about how to stay safe and healthy throughout, um, the school year.
The next measure is A 1.5, student sense of social emotional security. Uh, and the data that we use to arrive at this, uh, score is the Minnesota Student Survey, which is a change from, uh, the survey we used to use in the past. And we are at progressing, which is the same place we're in FY21. And, uh, when we talk about student sense of emotional security is assessing how they feel in comparison to their friends as far as being bullied or having some support system in school. So we're at progressing and we hope that with the safe return in person and the support offered by our social worker and our staff, we will see more progress into that area.
The next measure.
Still, so 8.21, student sense of physical security. We also measure how students, uh, are at school. Do they feel safe at school or did they see anybody being bullied, uh, any of, uh, those metrics? And so when we look at, uh, the FY22, we're at progressing, which is one step above where we were last year in baseline. And this is in part to the work, uh, that we've been doing with our deans and assistant principal, uh, to make sure that all the children have an adult who care about them and that we treat them in a humane way when we're interacting with them based on behavior. So, uh, it's very important that, uh, students are safe when they're in our schools.
And the next one, A 2.2, um, it was right at 95%. So it's right between progressing and vision, again for the employee retention rate. Um, and then tying into a staff satisfaction with working conditions. For the last three years, um, we sent out a survey, we've sent out more years than that, but for the last three years, um, we've been at vision for staff saying that they are satisfied with the working conditions here at Columbia Heights Public Schools.
And the last measure, which is A 2.4 is discipline data. And so this is the measure that shows us how many students were suspended for the entire period of school, but, uh, this is factoring out of school suspension. And, uh, we had fewer than 200. So we're at vision, to be exact, the number was 151 suspension. And I think it's about 10 more than the previous year.
And then some strategies going into the school year. Um, continue with the benefit and wellness education for staff. Um, I know our benefit specialist is working on a wellness session during the professional development for, um, staff on just October 31st. Um, continue to provide irresistible employment opportunities, making it a great place to work and learn and really getting that message out to, um, people looking for employment. And so really hire great staff and then retain them.
Some additional strategies are, uh, surveying families and staff and students in multiple times throughout the year so that we can gauge, uh, if there is a movement between quarters on how students are feeling or doing or reporting, uh, their experiences in school. And then the last one is to continue to provide professional development for staff to support social emotional learning. Um, we know that at Columbia Academy, for example, we're piloting a curriculum called BT Cube, uh, in partnership with Metro ECSU. So, um, and that is to strengthen our existing approach to, um, supporting social emotional learning in our schools.
Any questions?
Yeah, thanks for that. Am I missing a virtual hands up? I always have to look. Laura, real life hands up.
Physical hand up.
Physical hand up, yep.
At least we don't have to stand, raise our hand when we stand.
Was that a thing?
Oh, it can be.
Oh, wow. No, let's not do that.
We need to on a small board.
Nope.
Uh, actually I was just wondering, um, as far as the climate survey is concerned, can I just get a, like, um, like a copy of the questions? I don't need to have the aggregate data or anything. I'm just kind of curious as to, as to what we're asking.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Brenna.
Can you tell me what a, like, 3.5 to 4 on the security, like, what does that mean? It's not like a percentage.
Is that a rank between 1 and 5?
Talking about security.
Are they scoring their level of?
I'm just wondering what, yeah, what those numbers. How do you get to? It's the metric from the national survey.
So it's out of 5?
It's a Leichert scale. Is that?
Yep. It's the metric that's provided from the national survey that, that we use, um, which is the, the questions that Member Palmer's looking, asking for.
So do they rank on a scale of 1 to 5?
I don't believe it's 5. I believe it's 4. Um, but it's been a few years since I've administered that one.
Yeah, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, right? Okay. Well, I'm wondering how they would get to 5 then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That part.
4 to 5, 4 to .1 to 5 would be?
I mean, we could ask this, uh, was our, um, data person and she could provide some responses to that.
Okay.
Cause in the preparation of this data, that's a conversation this and I had and say, when, cause when you look at the other metrics, you have a question of, it doesn't seem to be equal. And so I don't know if that's what your question is.
I just don't know what 4 means. I guess, like at 95% like makes sense, but I guess I don't, I just don't understand what they're measuring.
We can provide.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was just, um, when you ask about satisfaction, is that a survey that is like untraceable back? Like are they able to, to answer without? Yeah.
It's an anonymous survey that we send out to staff. Um, don't list their location or anything like that.
I figured since everybody else was raising their hand, I wouldn't throw you a.
Did you see me look at my computer first?
I did. I was so proud.
I'm like, Mary and, Mary and Lori and they like to click the button. It's good though. I like it.
Sometimes I can be a rule follower. Uh, just to point out that also there's that scale for the student sense of social emotional security as well as the physical, um, is the same. So if we could get, thank you. Um, I'm curious and I don't want to give away anything to competing school districts, but looking at the staff retention rate, um, and the, um, you know, you continue to provide irresistible employment. and the, you know, continue to provide irresistible employment opportunities, what do you think, what have you heard that was successful compared to what other districts are doing?
If you could say without.
No, I would say, you know, in the last year or two years of the pandemic, that we've really handled it cautiously compared to other districts. And almost being, I won't say too cautious, but being on that other side of, we're not just going to open up schools and get rid of masks. Staff, and these are just anecdotal, but staff, I think, do feel appreciated. They do feel like principals support them, that the district supports them. We also pay competitive to other districts. And then our benefits are probably some of the best benefits you'll get around. I also think you've got like Principal Coolman, who's got teachers that he had in St. Paul. And they know how great he is. So you've got this exceptional leader that's bringing teachers with him. You get staff and that just really love this district, and they start bringing their colleagues into it.
Awesome, thank you.
I was glad to see the kids' sense of physical safety go up. Such a really tough topic. It's much different than when we were all students. And I was thankful, it would be hard to learn if you didn't feel emotionally or physically safe. Again, we want to get that up into that, whatever that 4.1 to 5 range is. But I'm glad to see their sense of physical safety increasing. You know, and I'm eager to see the attendance data, because we've been hearing, you know, after this year, I'll be glad to see the attendance data because kids learn when they're present, right? And we've struggled to get regular attendance. And I know we have been taking, making effort to get there. So I'll be curious to see how that's going for us down the way.
Actually, one thing that, to sort of piggyback a little bit off what you've said, the physical safety. I'm curious if, and I know we're going to get the questions, but I'm curious if it also included a metric or understanding of not just like, am I safe in this school, but more, am I safe from illness? Particularly thinking about COVID. So I don't know if that was also covered in the question or not? Or how kids interpreted that?
My guess is this is like a longitudinal, is that how you would say? I think they ask the same questions every year, so the metric is consistent. So I'm assuming it doesn't have like a COVID-specific.
No, I don't, yeah, I would be surprised if it did. And also, I would be interested to see if any, anybody collecting that data had pulled that apart or had identified that as an area. So I'm excited to see the questions.
So yeah, the question you'll receive comes from the Minnesota Student Survey, which is the first year that we've moved away from the old survey that we used to do. And so it literally talks about safety in schools. Am I coming to a safe school? Or in the past 30 days, have I been bullied, or have I seen kids being bullied? Those are the type of questions that you'll see.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for sharing. We'll see you back this time next year. I mean, before then, of course, for the two of you, your regulars. Oh, like right now? What's next? It's a great question. We will move on to, oh, action items. Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. And once you know it, it's Executive Director Niemwee and Director Bennett. Welcome back.
Yes, I told him not to get up. I'm like, just stay.
Bondo's like, hey, Natty, I got you here.
Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. Pursuant to Minnesota Rule 3535.9910, each school district shall annually submit to the Commissioner of Education a statement of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination and provide the designated supporting information to ensure that statement. This is an annual action item brought forward to the school board. Once approved, Superintendent Stenbik will sign the assurance of compliance and it'll be submitted via the MDE user account system. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination and to verify the district is in compliance.
All right. I think, we'll need a motion. We just, Director Bennett just read the motion. Laura?
Second.
Second. Mary? Now, discussion questions. Lorian.
I have a question. So, thank you. And I know that this is something that has to be done. And I think in reading through it, obviously it should be, I mean, it's unfortunate that we have to do it, but it should be done. My assumption is that we meet all of these requirements and compliance, but I'm assuming that there are avenues to handle if we don't. So any reports or issues, those would have come forward should there have been any concern that we are not compliant in any of these areas, correct?
Any concerns as far as possible violation of a policy would be investigated. And action will be taken if necessary.
Thank you. Great question. Other questions?
I guess just kind of a, I guess a side here. So we, so the statement gets signed, do we have to provide any proof that we're in compliance with any of this? Or, I mean, there is supporting data for each one of these items?
Superintendent Stenbik might know more, but I do believe we have to say like, this many people were trained in mandated reporting, this many people were trained in. Like, I think they divide up by support staff and licensed staff and who.
Okay.
I know we have to give numbers.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, yeah, I mean, as long as we're in compliance and we can prove that we're in compliance, that's kind of.
During our, during our.
I know, there's a lot of feedback right now. You got to kind of point it away.
During our official, like when the state comes in to do auditing, we always have to have that data or evidence on hand. You know, when they come in to audit, we never know what they're going to ask us for. And so we have to have everything in order. They can ask us for any of the pieces, and so we have to have it. And that's one of the checks and balances that makes sure that we're, because you know, we have those annual audits come in every year for compliance pieces.
It's part of the reason we do the really deep audits.
Thanks, yep.
So like when we're talking about like discrimination in employment and stuff, I mean, are they asking you for like numbers of teachers within each different racial group and things? Or like are there definite benchmarks that we have to meet?
Do you want to talk about, the Director Bennett has to submit a report, the STARS report, and they look at, they look at different pieces like that with licensure. They also look at, one that happens a lot in education unfortunately is gender. And so we can be, you know, sometimes on the edge of, you know, not having balance because we have many female staff and.
Pay equity.
And right now, we have to submit, it's the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, EUL-5. And that looks at different categories of employees, male, female, and their race. So we do report that, but that's more of a federal report we have to do.
And there has to be like ratios that we have to meet?
We submit the data and then they review it. So you don't really pass or not pass it. Like you do at the pay equity report, you pass or not pass. And that's more of a federal report. And I know when you submit the assurance of compliance, it's, I think they're just more looking at who's been trained and who's aware of it, and that we're not violating it.
Thank you.
All right, so as a reminder, this is the motion to approve the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. Are we ready for a vote? No more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Now, I'll see you later. We will see you later. We will move on to board topics. If there's anything the board would like to bring up that wasn't included. Thanks, meeting. Homecoming. Homecoming. There's lots of outfits and stuff going on at the high school.
Yes, I saw a student dressed as a dinosaur today. That was fun.
That's awesome.
It's character day.
Hope it's fun. Hope they're having fun over there. So the football game and the gym opening, if you want to come, get a sneak peek. If you're in the public on Friday night, we're doing a grand reopening of the gym. Is it 5:30 prior to the football game? Football game's at 7:00. I hear the boosters are giving away hot dogs before the game for free. So come down and get a hot dog.
Fireworks after the game?
Fireworks after the game, yep.
Not during?
Not during, no touchdown fireworks. Pet owners, we hear you. We don't want to terrorize your pets, but people do love fireworks, so we're trying to find a happy medium.
And also families with, people who are, have difficulties with those big loud.
With the loud noises, yep.
Yeah, so we heard the feedback from the community.
We heard the feedback, so we're limiting it to just one space, so it's not as sudden. So football game will get over, and then they'll do the fireworks, so. The Scholarship Alumni Scholarship Foundation dinner's coming up. There'll be information on that if people want to come or support the Alumni Scholarship Foundation, which gives back scholarships to our students every year. We'd love to see you there.
October 27th.
October 27th, Jack's Cafe.
More information at the high school office.
Yep. Our website. All right, any other activities or items?
Homecoming dance.
Homecoming, that's, you have to be a student to go to that one. If you're a student watching, that's open to you.
I did, I did offer to my ninth grader that I would be happy to chaperone, and he said, no, thank you.
They would love that, yeah.
I mean, I would love that. Not sure he would.
All right, great. Other things? Other, other. You're welcome. All right, here none, we will adjourn this meeting. Can't see my watch with my glasses off at 8:01 PM.